Thank you for having to do this via Zoom and per the Kentucky Attorney Attorney General's Guidelines. And we are broadcasting on P O G twenty and twenty point one and also on the city of Bardstown's YouTube channel. I am going to move some items around. Aaron Bose, our CFO, has got another stop he needs to make. So I want to move on to the budget part of our agenda. And we've got a first reading of our fiscal year twenty budget amendment. So I would ask that someone please introduce that ordinance to us, please. And I'll let Aaron address any questions.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to introduce ordinance number B twenty twenty dash oh nine.
Introduce this ordinance number B two thousand twenty dash zero nine.
And ask our city attorney to to read it.
In summary.
Read, read some, yes, read the summary of the annual budget for fiscal year twenty twenty and was adopted by the city council on June twenty six, two thousand nineteen.
Well, okay, this is, and just to work on this is the amendment, right, Mayor?
It's the amendment, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Summary of ordinance number B twenty twenty dash zero nine and ordinance amending and adopting as amended ordinance number B twenty nineteen dash zero seven. The city of Bardstown's budget ordinance for the fiscal year July first, twenty nineteen through June thirtieth, twenty twenty. Whereas an annual budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty was adopted by the city council of the city of Bardstown on June twenty sixth, twenty nineteen. And whereas there have been unanticipated changes in both revenues and expenditures during that period of time. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Bardstown, Kentucky that section one, the annual budget for fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty B and is hereby amended as follows. Number one, general fund, decrease anticipated revenues from twelve million, four hundred and fifty seven thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars to eleven million, two hundred and forty three thousand, eight hundred and twenty three dollars. And decrease authorized expenditures from eleven million, seven hundred and one thousand, four hundred and fifty six dollars to eleven million, ninety two thousand and seventy one dollars. Number two, combined utilities fund, decrease the anticipated revenues from fifty one million, five hundred and thirty seven thousand, five hundred dollars to forty one thousand, seven hundred and twenty, forty one million, seven hundred and twenty nine thousand, seventy three dollars. And decrease expenditures from fifty million, three hundred and forty seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty six dollars to forty one million, three hundred and ninety five thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. Section two, the annual budget is hereby amended and attached to reflect the above reference amendments to the general and combined utilities funds, revenues and expenditures that comprise the fiscal year twenty nineteen through twenty twenty budget for the city of Bardstown. Section three, all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict are hereby repealed to the extent of that conflict. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect following publication as required by law. This summary was certified by Audrey Hayden, city attorney.
Thank you, Audrey. This is a first reading, we won't have a vote. We will have a special hall meeting tomorrow at noon to do the second reading so we can get this adopted. Ordinance before the fiscal year end, June thirtieth. I would ask Aaron if you would like to make any just general comments about some of the items that you amended here to.
Okay.
On the benefit of the council.
All right, thank you. Yeah, as you can see, this is probably a larger amendment than what you all are normally used to seeing. And as we've talked in past sessions, and as was a comment in this past year's audit. There were line item, revenue line items throughout each department's budget that were not really supposed to be there. And it wasn't supposed to be shown that way. So those transfers of unrestricted reserves were shown as revenue line items throughout every department. There was one point two million in the general fund and four point two million in the throughout the combined utilities. So I've, I went ahead and just to clean that up and make that budget look a little bit better for audit purposes. I went ahead and removed those. In doing that, it changed some other things that I had to start really diving deep. And there were several spots, especially in water and sewer where projects are being carried over into next year. So there's large fluctuations there. I tried to detail out each department's revenue and expense changes in in that amendment detail attachment. So, but even with all the changes, we're still in a net positive situation of about four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars through the both, both the general fund and the combined utilities fund.
Anyone have any questions with Aaron on these reconciliations? Okay, seeing none, then we'll do the second reading on this tomorrow. And then we'll also move on to a second reading this evening of the fiscal year budget twenty twenty dash twenty twenty one. So we'd ask Audrey to do the second reading, please, of the summary.
Summary of ordinance number B twenty twenty dash zero eight. Annual budget for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. An ordinance adopting the city of Bardstown, Kentucky annual budget for the fiscal year July first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one. Estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government. Whereas an annual budget proposal and message has been prepared and delivered to the city council. And whereas the city council has received and reviewed the budget proposal and made desired modifications. Now therefore be it ordained by the city of Bardstown Commonwealth of Kentucky. Section one, that the annual budget for the fiscal year beginning July first, twenty twenty and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty one is hereby adopted as follows as set forth below. Section two, that any and all ordinances inconsistent with this ordinance are hereby repealed. And section three, that this ordinance shall take effect July first, twenty twenty after its passage and publication is required by law. This summary was certified by Audrey L. Hayden, city attorney.
Okay, thank you, Audrey. We spent some work sessions on this and the last meeting as well on this. So if I could, I'd ask for someone to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number B two thousand twenty dash zero eight. It's our annual budget for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty one.
Mayor, if I may be in order, I'd like to make a motion to approve the operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one. And as presented to us by our chief financial officer.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Shekels, we have a second by Councilman Williams. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, since this is a second reading, we'll take individual votes. And all in favor signify the saying aye, starting with Councilman Doles.
Aye.
Councilman Shekels. Councilman Williams.
Aye.
Councilman Buckman. Councilwoman Hart.
Aye.
And Councilman Hibs.
Aye.
Okay, motion is carried and we adopted our fiscal year budget for this coming year. Thank you all for all your hard work on this and all the staff who were on this meeting this evening because a lot of work went there. Special thanks to Aaron for getting this thing organized like he has and great work. So we appreciate it. We've got a lot of, a lot of work to do ahead of us, but the good news is I think we have the funding in place to get all this done and provide all the services that we need. Thank you all. All right, I'm going to go back to the agenda. Items starting at number one, has everyone had a chance to review the minutes of our special meeting on June ninth and June twelfth? There's no changes or additions, we'll approve them by unanimous consent.
Mayor, I had a quick question, please.
All right.
Under the Henrytown Pride Garden District, should we make a note that that sign is at their expense and not the city's expense? Or does that matter?
I don't, it does, does it, I'm not looking at that one, is that the, on the ninth? It doesn't say the city's expense, does it?
No, it doesn't say either one.
Well, if they don't, if they don't pay for it and get it made, we're not going to hang it up.
They had, they had somebody step up to pay for it, so that was good. I just didn't know we needed to include that.
If you'd like to make, I mean, I don't know if that was actually the discussion we had. These are the minutes of that meeting, I can't remember if that was any actual discussion so that that would even need to be included in these minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
All right, thank you. So we'll approve them by unanimous consent. Then we have Cemetery Dean, Betty Jo Hughes, One Grave Site, we'll approve that by unanimous consent. Next, we have fireworks permit, the Nelson County Humane Society. I guess we can take these individually, they need a motion to approve the request for the fireworks tent in the Walmart parking lot for the Humane Society.
So moved, Mayor.
I think that was Councilman Doles and who else?
That's me, sir Frank.
Councilman Hibs on the second. Any discussion? All in favor then signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Next fireworks permit we have is Bardstown Church of God. And it will be located at seven twenty six North Third Street from June twenty fourth to July fifth. Need a motion to approve that request as well.
So moved, Mayor.
Is that Councilman Hibs?
Buckman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Joe? Councilman Buckman, and then do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Second by Councilman Williams, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, like sign. Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, next we have a municipal order number M two thousand twenty dash zero six, which is located at two sixteen South Third Street. If I could get Audrey to read that, please.
Municipal order M two thousand twenty dash six. A municipal order accepting the application for a tax assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at two sixteen South Third Street, Bardstown, Kentucky. Be it ordered by the city council of the city of Bardstown, Kentucky. Section one, that the application for assessment moratorium certificate for the property located at two sixteen South Third Street, Bardstown, Kentucky is hereby accepted. And further expressing the city's intent to grant an assessment moratorium to the owner of said property upon compliance with the city's property assessment and reassessment moratoriums as defined in Kentucky Revised Statute, Chapter ninety nine point five nine five and the following sections. Section two, that this order shall take effect and be in full force when passed and recorded according to law.
Right, thank you, Audrey. As you all know, we do this from time to time as requested in the historic district when people are investing money to rehabilitate these properties. So the value will be frozen for a period of time until the repairs are made and then it'll get reassessed, I think. Is that a five year moratorium?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, that's what I thought. So you all seeing your, the application where the property is located there on South Third. So I could, I'd ask for a motion then to approve this request.
Sure, I'll make that motion to approve municipal order number M two thousand twenty dash oh six.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Buckman, is it a second?
Second, Mayor.
A second? Any other discussion?
Just a quick comment if I could about this.
Sure.
Once again, this is just one of the really things that we can offer to people to redo, rehab these houses. And it's not a lot of money, but it is pretty good incentive for whoever ends up with this house. So in five years' time, it's a lot of money. But it's good that our historic properties are still, people still desire to buy them. So that's a good thing for us here.
Right, that, that probably sort of adjoins two or three properties that are just on the opposite side of a mirror that have been rehabbed. So it's a good compliment to that neighborhood.
Absolutely, yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Mayor, I'm sorry, I just wanted to let you know I'll abstain from this vote.
Okay, you involved with the transaction?
No, but it's family.
Okay, all right, Councilwoman Hart will abstain. I'll call for the vote, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay. Motion's carried. Is everybody still able to hear okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. We'll call on Jessica then, I think we have a change order number one on the Parkway Drive Water Main Extension Phase One.
Yes, Hubert Excavating has been on site for the last couple of weeks, doing this, the work for this project, installing the sixteen inch water main and making that tie in along, under the Bluegrass Parkway. And that ties in over along Philly Atro Lane across from Old Ben Way. And then connects back over at Parkway Drive by Parkway Baptist Church and makes that connection. In ordering the materials and doing the finalization and getting the water line installed, it was noted that there was an error on our construction plans. The valving that we had located where the, there was a stubout for this connection was actually in, on the opposite side of Old Ben Acres from Philly Atro Lane. So it required an additional one hundred and twenty eight feet to kind of make this connection at the point we intended. And they, these prices were basically established by the unit prices in the original bid. So we just took the additional footage at the unit price they provided and that's what this came, came up to be. So the overall change order increased to contract price is fifteen thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars and eight cents. Making the total overall contract price be two hundred and thirty eight thousand, two hundred and thirty four dollars and eight cents. This project with this change order is still within our original budget. And they're going to be completed in a much shorter time. In fact, the line is already made the tie-ins, they're just pressure testing the line now and preparing to do final testing and getting everything completed. So they're almost completely done with this work and are getting that project done very timely and optimize the dry weather that we had.
All right, anyone have any other, any questions on this change order? It's pretty straightforward, it's a line item. Per unit increase based on the increased amount of linear feet of this project. All right, there's no questions, I'd ask for a motion then to approve the change order number one for the Parkway Drive Water Main Extension. Phase one on the Philly Atro Lane Loop for fifteen thousand, five thirty four dash zero eight.
Mayor, I'll enter that motion.
We have motion of Councilman Doles, is there a second?
I'll second it, Mayor, Bill Shekels.
Councilman Shekels on the second, any other discussion or questions? Call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign? Okay, motion's carried, thank you. Jessica, you got one more, I think. Change order number one for our downtown sewer water improvements.
Yes, this change order is occurring, couple of things. The way the unit bid tab, bid form was created, there were several unit prices established for the project, but with quantities of zero. Because we weren't for sure if those items were going to need to be utilized. So after walking the project with the contractor and seeing exactly with his methods, what he was needed to perform the job. We were needing to add and actually create a few quantities, at least initially, to move forward here in the first couple of weeks of construction. One of those items were removing of trees greater than twelve inch in diameter. There's a section where there's four trees that need to be moved that they were over that, that size that are not included in the price of just their install trench price for, for that sewer work. So again, there was a unit price established in the bid form, so I'm just creating, recognizing that. There was also a section of eighteen inch storm pipe that was on Fifth Street. Though the pipe was shown on the plan, but it wasn't until we got, they got into and doing the excavation, removing of the manhole, that they realized that that pipe was in a such shape that it needed to be replaced, at least by where that manhole was. So they removed nine feet of that eighteen inch storm pipe and, and replaced that back in place. But again, there wasn't a unit price set up for eighteen inch pipe. There was for twelve and fifteen and I believe some eight inch pipe, but not for eighteen. So this establishes a unit price for eighteen inch storm pipe in case there's some other areas that we run into as well. We will have an established unit price set to go along with that. And then the final item was that there was, in one of the bid alternatives, there was a sewer line and manhole that we were planning to replace the line, but not necessarily the manhole. And upon looking at it, to avoid additional damage to private property, where was a privacy fence and so forth along Templin Avenue. So we elected to go ahead and shift the line closer to the right of way. And that required actually replacing the new manhole, we could not then save the existing manhole in place. So that was a unit price, time and materials for replacing that, replacing that manhole while they're there, replacing that, replacing the sewer line. So the total additions are showing up as seventeen thousand, five dollars and twenty five cents. And again, this is, I expect that there will be some others as we go along through the project with this sort of project, just for the nature of, we want to pay the contractor for what he needs to do. But again, there's some items we might not pay out at all, you know, that will maybe remain a zero quantity. But I guess if there's any other questions, I can hopefully clarify those for anyone.
Jessica, I just, I just have one question, this is David. The trees that have to be removed, are those, all of those are within the city right of way, I'm assuming?
There, no, not all of them are. Some of them are alongside property lines, like in a fence row between two neighboring residential property owners. That, that's where the sewer main ran along a sewer easement from the alley to the public right, to the public street. So that's where the sewer main was running and that side property line had some pretty large established trees. And due to the proximity of the home, they couldn't go along the easement and then turn their bucket to actually, you know, dump the excavated material and get in there and work. So they needed a space to clear that tree within the easement, the trees were in the easement and we have the right to remove those trees. But otherwise we would try to avoid them when we can, but because of the proximity of the house, there was just no room to work. So they needed to come out.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica, I'm assuming this is Dick. Are these being dug out or are they grinding the stumps down or is that part of this pricing?
I believe they were hiring a Vitato Tree Service to drop the trees, those larger trees. So I'm assuming, my understanding was that the tree would be completely removed. Unless, of course, they, the homeowner wanted a portion of the stump to remain as a poster of some kind. But again, because it's in that trench area, it was my understanding the trees were coming out. But it was being done by professional tree service such to minimize any damage to any, any homes that are close by.
Right. Any other questions for Jessica on this change order number one for our downtown sewer water project phase one? All right, seeing none then. All in favor to approve this change order for seventeen thousand, five dollars and twenty five cents, change order number one for the downtown water sewer project. Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion's carried, thank you, thank you, Jessica.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, hadn't had any COAs for a while under H R B, but we got plenty this evening. But I'm going to call on Audrey to read the summaries and then there's the first one, she's got some comments to make on that before we get to the vote. But I'll let you read them first and then we can go from there. Is there, I don't think there's anybody that has a conflict that has to recuse, but is there or not?
There is, Mayor. I'll have to either abstain or recuse on C O A twenty dash five six.
Yeah, I should have caught that. Yeah, that's in between all those table words, I missed that. Sorry about that. All right, we'll let you abstain from that one since you are a partner in that development. So Audrey, if you would, just go ahead and read that one and take the vote and then we'll let David be able to.
Okay.
Join us for the rest of them.
Okay, C O A twenty fifty six, Summer Arling House applicant Bourbon Capital Brewing Owners, request to install temporary signage at one twelve West Flagey. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed sign with the following conditions, conditions, the final design of the sign will be staff approved.
Okay.
Mayor, if I'm in order?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve C O A twenty dash fifty six. With the condition set forth.
We have a motion by Councilman Williams, is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second by Councilwoman Hart, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, motion's carried and Councilman Doles is abstaining from this vote. All right, Audrey, if you want to go then and get back to the.
Okay.
Start and read through all these.
All six pages, I'm ready. C O A twenty forty one, Edland Signs applicant Ron May owner, request to install a sign at one twenty four North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the sign with the following conditions, conditions, the sign is approved, however, the location shown on the application is not approved. The sign must be brought down and placed in line with the other signs on Third Street. This is so that the visual impact of the streetscape downtown remains the same and is unaltered. C O A twenty forty two, Edland Signs applicant Pikey Conway owner, request to install a sign at two twenty six A North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed sign. C O A twenty forty three, James and Marie Washburn applicants owners, request to paint the building at one fourteen East Stephen Foster Avenue. Recommendation, approval to paint the building the proposed colors. C O A twenty forty six, Greg Ashworth applicant owner, request to install landscape edging at two thirteen East Flagey Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed edging. C O A twenty forty seven, Greg Ashworth applicant owner, request to install new storm doors at two thirteen East Flagey Avenue. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed storm doors. C O A twenty forty four, Harold Wimpstead applicant owner, request to install a new roof at one oh five Old Bloomfield Pike. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed roof. C O A twenty forty five, Harold Wimpstead applicant owner, request to install a new deck at one oh five Old Bloomfield Pike. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed deck. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed deck. COA 2048, Charles Colston and Lizbeth Barclay applicants owners, request to remove trees at 301 South Fifth Street. Recommendation, approval to remove the proposed trees with the following conditions, conditions. That the trees that will be planted back will be staff approved. COA 2049, Charles Colston and Lizbeth Barclay applicants owners, request to install a pool at 301 South Fifth Street. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed pool with the fa- pool with the following conditions, conditions. The pool will remain up only during the summer months and it is approved for two summers only. COA 2050, Demir Sarik applicant owner, request to paint the rear of the building at 118 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to paint the rear of the building with the following conditions, conditions. The new hope gray or ice slate colors will be used. COA 2051, Demir Sarik applicant owner, request to install a brick oven at 120 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to install the brick oven with the following conditions, conditions. The workstation, the base of the oven, the wood partition and the entire area must be staff approved. COA 2052, Demir Sarik applicant owner, request to rebuild the windows at 120 North Third Street. Recommendation, approval to rebuild the windows with the following conditions, conditions. The windows will be, will be rebuilt using the historic contractor that is mentioned in the applications. The windows will be rebuilt using the drawings presented in the application, allowing them to replicate the original design of the windows completely. COA 2058, Mike and Amy Deaton applicant, applicants owners, request to build a new garage at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed garage. COA 2059, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and add foundation at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed foundation on the garage. COA 2060, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and add siding at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed siding on the garage with the following conditions, conditions. The siding must be installed smooth side out with no fake wood grain and the dimensions are the same as the existing home. COA 2061, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and add gutters at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed gutters on the garage. COA 2062, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and add doors at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed doors on the garage. COA 2063, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and paint the structure at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to paint the structure, the proposed paint colors on the garage. COA 2064, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and add columns at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed columns on the garage. COA 2065, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to build a new garage and add a roof at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed roof on the garage. COA 2066, Mike and Amy Deaton applicants owners, request to add landscaping at 108 West Broadway. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed landscaping. COA 2067, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install a new roof at 107 West Mir. Recommendation
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes, sir.
To give you a break in reading air. Your mouth's probably a little dry. What, okay, with each one of these COAs, when they submit these, do they have to pay a separate fee for that?
No, so when they're, when they all relate to the same property and Joe can correct me, Councilman Buckman can correct me if I'm wrong, when they all relate to the same property. So for example, the Deetons where there's, I don't know how many, 20 that relate to it. They paid one application fee, but the reason that we've broken them out this way is that, and I think that this started when, uh, Mr. Butler was the city attorney. It helps if there's something that doesn't get approved or there's an issue or there's a condition added. They found that it makes it a little bit more clear. It may not feel that way to you all, but it helps the historiography board make it a little bit more clear.
So they don't have to, so they don't have to disapprove the whole application, just that section?
Well, or, or if they disapprove a certain section, it's a little bit easier to tell what got disapproved specifically without having to try and dig through the minutes or make some real consolidated motion as to, you know, which parts approved or what conditions are on some parts, that kind of thing.
Okay.
That makes sense. Yeah, so they didn't pay like, you know, 30 times or anything.
Well, I'll just, okay, well, you probably need a break anyways.
Yes, that is good. Thank you. Okay, COA 20, uh, 67, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install a new roof at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed roof with the following conditions, conditions. The standing seam roof must be 16 inches from seam to seam. The roof will be flat in between the seams and the matte finish of the roof will be staff approved. COA 2068, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install gutters at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed round gutters in the black color. COA 2069, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install a driveway at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed driveway with the following conditions, conditions. The concrete is only stamped on the perimeter of the driveway and to be a maximum of two bricks wide. The design of the stamp will be staff approved and the color of the concrete on the entire driveway will be staff approved. COA 2070, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to remove a side door and deck at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to remove the side door and porch with the following conditions, conditions. The door will be bricked in with the bricks that match the corresponding new bricks on the home. COA 2071, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to replace vinyl siding with new vinyl siding at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to replace the vinyl siding with the following conditions, conditions. The material that will be used for the replacement of the vinyl siding will be a wood product, hardy plank or borrel product. COA 2072, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to remove trees at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to remove trees with the following conditions, conditions. Any large trees that are removed will be replaced back with other trees that will be staff approved. COA 2073, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install new handrails at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to pro- to install the proposed handrails with the following conditions, conditions. The railing to be used will be the specific one discussed in the meeting on page 14 of the application. COA 2074, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install a chimney cap at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed chimney cap. COA 2075, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to paint the brick at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to paint one small area of brick with the following conditions, conditions. The only brick which the board would allow to be painted would be the brick on the porch columns only. The porch columns will be painted a white color. COA 2076, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to replace the windows at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to replace only the storm windows with the following conditions, conditions. The HRB board is only approving the storm windows to be replaced with a black trim that will be staff approved. The original wood windows will be repaired in kind. COA 2078, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants owners, request to install new lights at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to install the proposed lighting with the following conditions, conditions. The lighting is staff approved with the exception of the square light that was proposed and the final light design will be staff approved. COA 2079, Bill and Saber Mattingly applicants under request to bury the electric service underground at 107 West Mir. Recommendation, approval to bury the electric service as proposed.
Great, thank you, Audrey.
And Mayor, did you want me to comment on that first one or did you want to wait for that?
No, I think we, because I think we need to make, I think, as you and I discussed, we may have an additional condition to add to that, if you'd like to speak to that.
Sure.
That, that application.
So Mr. May, who owns two buildings downtown, um, has several violations relating to those properties, but specifically with respect to 124 North Third. And the code enforcement officer has issued violations, two violations relating to that property, um, requesting that he come and apply for those or remove them and that has not happened. One of them is an external, um, vent hood that's on the side of the building that I, it's my understanding would not have been approved by the historic review board and was placed there without historic review board approval. And that, uh, citation was issued several months back. Um, and he's taken no further action to come into compliance with that. And then more recently, in the last two or three weeks, the code enforcement officer has issued a citation at that same property at 124 North Third, um, relating to exterior speakers which are mounted, like audio speakers, which are mounted on the building, um, and requested again that he come into compliance or come apply for that. I don't know if that would or wouldn't be approved in the historic district. Um, but since he's not in compliance with several, um, issues with respect to the historic review board, um, I would recommend that we condition approval of this, uh, COA on him coming into compliance completely, uh, with respect to the property there at 124 North Third Street.
Um, you know, I, when I read that, I knew that there was two, uh, outstanding citations where he's made, uh, physical changes to these properties without even submitting applications. And the same has happened at another property, uh, across the street that he owned. So I just didn't feel like it, it seemed, uh, inappropriate that we would approve this when he's not in compliance, which, uh, uh, with these HRB regulations. And, and that is also a requirement of your business license that you will, uh, operate within the city rules and regulations. And, um, I spoke to two county officials today also in regards to this applicant. And I think they have some issues as well. So I think we agreed that, uh, we would want this applicant to be in complete, uh, compliance with all city and county regulations before this business would be permitted to open. But the condition on this would be it's approved, uh, it's approved only when he comes into compliance and rectifies these code violations that are outstanding right now. And, uh, of course, the sign cannot be, uh, I would recommend the condition also said the sign cannot be, uh, installed until such time as these other, uh, code violations are rectified.
And I think that's appropriate, Mayor, given the, the history here.
So, um.
Mayor, a question?
Yes, sir.
So you want to take that one separately then?
Yes, sir, I think so.
Okay.
So we, we actually would need a motion to add, Audrey, if you would like to word the, uh, additional condition on this approval.
Sure, uh, Mayor, so I think that we would want to word it that the council or whoever is making the motion, we recommend approval of COA 2041 with the additional condition that, um, the sign is not to be installed until, uh, Ron, until Ron May comes into compliance regarding the, the two outstanding historic review board violations for which he's already been cited relating to this property.
Thank you.
So move, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion to Councilwoman Williams. Is there a second?
I'll second, Mayor.
Second to Councilman Hibbs. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor on COA 20 dash 41, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion, motion is carried. Thank you. Um, then I would ask for a motion then to approve the other COAs as read with those, uh, conditions that were, uh, required of those approvals from the historic review board on the ones that have conditions.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, that we approve the remaining, uh, COAs that were read by our city attorney.
Okay, we have a motion for all the remaining COAs read with conditions.
Second, Mayor.
Most to Councilman Buckman and a second to Councilman Doans. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right, I'll oppose. Motion is carried. Thank you. I, uh, apologize, I, uh, got, I guess caught up in talking about those trees and the questions, uh, with Jessica and I. Um, back to the change order one on the downtown sewer water improvements. I failed to ask for a mo- motion and a second. So I'd like to go back to that and revisit that. And I need a motion to approve the change order one on the downtown sewer water improvements.
So move, Mayor.
All right, Councilwoman Hart? Do I have a second?
Second, Mayor.
Councilman Hibbs? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then, uh, we did get a second on the change order, oh, excuse me, municipal order in 2040, oh, six, the tax moratorium, Joe Buckman, Councilman Buckman was the first. I think I failed to verbally say that. Who was the second for our city clerk on that one?
I believe that was me, Mayor, David.
Councilman Doans, I'm just gonna give this to, uh, Gary to make sure he got the right second on that. We don't need to revote on that. We just, I failed to verbally say who it was. All right? So, um, anyway, go, we played those things. I thank you all. We get this back open. I think we're about done. Um, yeah, we did the, the two budget. The things that, as I say, we'll do tomorrow, we're just gonna do the special call meeting for the second reading on the annual amendment on the budget fiscal year 20. And then we have one, um, HRB COA that we didn't get some of the detail in until later today. So that, that's a short meeting. We'll do that by soon, tomorrow at noon. As far as the, uh, mayor's update, you know, I've been having these updates on Friday and, uh, typically always talk about the number of cases and where we are. And, and I know people get tired of me talking about it, but, uh, fact of the matter is, you know, the COVID-19 virus has not gone away. And we've been hearing about, uh, spikes around the country. But, um, I don't know if I'd call this a spike, but it's, um, uh, major, uh, number of cases have come in since Friday. On Friday, um, we had two, two on Friday, which is about a normal day. But yesterday we had seven new cases here in Nelson County. And today we had five. So that's a huge, uh, increase for us. It's a total of 65 cases. Now, uh, here in Nelson County in Barstown, uh, the cases yesterday, all those people are quarantined. And today we have, uh, four quarantined out of the five and one hospitalized. So just want to let the public know that and let the council know that is that, uh, you know, there is still reason to be precautious on this and practice all the things that the, uh, health leaders and scientists and doctors are telling us. Uh, it's not something to, um, just take for granted. These cases are happening within the city of Barstown and quite a few on the, uh, out in the county. So it's not this isolated in one, uh, area of our city and county. So I just thought that was a huge number of cases to hit us in a matter of two days. So we just hope that's not something that's gonna stay consistent. The, um, small business grant program, as you know, excuse me, fiscal court agreed to participate with us last week, their fiscal court meeting. So we, uh, went in and reworked the, uh, language in the, uh, this phase two of the small grant program to include both the fiscal court and, uh, city council and city government. Revised the application a bit with Hannah's work and Gary Little's work and Aaron's work. And that was up on our website by Thursday evening and people were able to download the applications as of Friday. And we started, um, receiving applications yesterday. And to date, I'll just give you, uh, Aaron has given me an update. There's 20 applications, uh, we've received yesterday and today. 18 of those are in the city limits and two are outside the city limits. And, um, three, three applications, so it makes it a total of 23 applications. Uh, we actually got, we're ineligible. So, um, the initial few days, it's not as heavy applications as, uh, we got the first time around. But I think, uh, with the proper amount of publicity on this, that word's gonna get out and we'll get a number of, uh, applications going forward. But just to let you all know, uh, the effort that you all have been partly responsible for and now fiscal court and our task force and our distilleries and, uh, a lot of donations from the private sector, just to kind of give a cumulative number as to how much is being devoted to help us fight the COVID-19 and its impact on us, both financially in the business community and, and health-wise in our communities. And, um, with this $300,000 commitment from both the city and county, that takes, uh, that number up to $420,000 that are available for small business grant funds since we got started in this. As you might remember, we had a $110,000 raised privately. for both the grant program and the, also the Tri-County United Way and also the PPE part of the effort we made. So that's another hundred and ten thousand dollars in the distilleries with their contribution of the hand sanitizer. I mean, we have gallons and gallons and gallons of that and pallets of that has been made available both to first responders and to businesses who ordered their PPE from us. That's another hundred thousand dollars that have come to the community. So in total, we put together relief package of six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for our community, both Barstown and Nelson County. And I think we all should be proud of that effort. I think, as you remember, the number of people who responded to our small business grant and Tri-County United Way and their agencies that this supported was very much needed and it's great that we're in position to make this happen in the community. And I think it'll go a long way to helping us fight the virus as well as businesses fight to get reopened and stay open as a result of all the impact this has had on them. So really happy to report that, that number. You may notice out on Highway two forty-five, the orange barrels have gone up. They're starting to get the southbound lane ready for closure on that project. Jessica, if you're still with us. Is that, is the actual construction going to start this week or will it start next week?
And we, the city of Barstown started our in-kind work yesterday. We had the coring company out, coring holes in the back of the existing catch basins and our crews were out excavating behind that so that that work could be done this morning. So we've already started excavating out the earth for, in preparation for the walk and we have not yet started placing stone, but we've placed over seven hundred or excavated out over seven hundred linear feet for the walk today alone. So we are making progress and that's, that's going. So I appreciate the public's patience. I know that there's going to be times where the road lane closure is going to be certainly an inconvenience. We ask the public to bear with us, but we are going to try to do our best to get this project kicked off and, and completed as, as quickly as possible. Hopefully it'll be a good, great project for the community upon its completion.
Okay, thank you. They must have got on that after I went by there early this morning, but I did notice it's already interesting that the truck traffic is there coming off of West John Rowan on the opposite side of Third Street. You can see them merging over into the northbound lane going east on that to be ready to avoid the changing, lane changing. So at least, at least that information is out there. So hopefully the traffic will proceed without too much interruption. Recycling is open after the Guthrie Center. It's formally open. They, they kind of did a soft opening last week. I think they did give some information up late in the week that they were open and receiving the recycling like we had in the past. So we want to get that word out because I know a lot of people are anxious to get that open. So once we told them that we had the funding available for them, they were ready to open literally the next day. So I appreciate the work of the Guthrie Opportunity Center to join us and helping to get that open and hopefully in time, Community Care will be back open and be able to keep that open long, long term. So we're happy to make that announcement. As many of you know, the governor's executive order will be changing on Monday, the twenty-ninth, which will allow groups up to fifty start meeting. And with that, I spoke with Daniel Jeffries, our recreation director, and we will be opening the pavilions and the picnic table areas of our city parks. So that'll be happening effective June twenty-ninth. And speaking of that, I'm going to propose that we start having our council meetings beginning in July back in the council chambers. We can, you know, meet groups up to fifty. I would certainly respect if anybody's got any concerns or would like to talk about that. I think we can spread out properly and with mask and sanitation. Excuse me, sanitizer there. I think we can safely meet. I think fiscal court has already started to meet again in person. But if anybody has any concerns on that, if you want to get to me, talk to me about that. Just give me a call and I'll certainly reconsider that. Or if any of our staff and or certainly the first responders see that that's, might be a problem, I'll certainly consider that and we can continue to do this. But right now I'm proposing that we go back to in-person meetings. I think July seventh will be our first meeting in July. And last but not least, the, our car electric charging station that has been set up in the farmer's market, excuse me, has opened now. We did not do an official opening yet because of the restriction on the number of people in a group, but July first, we will have a, an official opening of that at ten AM at the farmer's market. But I noticed we had, I think within the first couple of days, I think we were able to track how many users, we already had three or four vehicles get fully charged at that station in the first couple of days and it was open last week. So that's good. I know the tourist commission is happy to see that opening because they paid for the actual equipment and the city installed it, but it's just something else that helps separate Barstown from some of the other communities that are all, you know, battling for this tourist dollar and so forth. And we've got this to attract people that some other cities can't attract because they're not set up for this. We have two charging stations available. So that's all I have for my update. Anyone have any questions or anything I've covered? Okay, if not, I would ask for a motion for adjournment, please.
So move, Mayor.
All right, we have a motion by Councilwoman Hart and a second by Councilman Williams. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? Okay, we are adjourned and thank you all for